Pakistan is a politically young country in the world, but the people of this land is a custodian of ancient civilizations of Indus Valley and Gondhara. These civilizations developed and flourished on this land, which is nowadays Pakistan. So, the history of this region is old and rich. The population of subcontinent was largely Hindu and Buddhist before arriving the Muslim traders, missionaries and armies. The Muslim traders and armies came in subcontinent in 7th and early 8th centuries. The local people attracted toward due to their fair trading, honesty, equality and social justice. These principles of Islam got the huge conversion from other religion to Islam. It was a starting point of Pakistan ideology or two-nation theory in Indian subcontinent. The subcontinent was a very vast area with diverse background of population. The diverse background of population never made the Indian subcontinent in single nation. It was impossible for a single ruler to rule over the whole subcontinent. Even the Mughal Empire was very strong but only dominated the northern India. Therefore, the British disbanded the Mughal Empire after the War of Independence. At that time Muslims were one-quarter of India's population. The Muslims ruled over subcontinent for centuries. Their defeat in the War of Independence in 1857 was a major setback. But it raised the consciousness in the Muslims of subcontinent about their identity. Personalities began to emerge who influenced the Muslim community as scholars, thinkers and leaders. There were some progressive Muslims like Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan, Alama Iqbal and Quidi Azam. These leaders contributed the awakening of Muslims through their ideas and giving back to them their sense of pride and purpose. The present unit will profoundly describe the ideology of Pakistan and two-nation theory. It will present the synopsis of historical background of ideology of Pakistan in subcontinent and also cover the evolution of two-nation theory. The advent of Islam, Muslim traders and Muslim dynasties cannot be ignored while discussing historical background of Pakistan ideology. The role and contribution of Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan, Alama Iqbal and Quidi Azam Muhammad Ali Jinnah are significantly discussed in this unit. The aims and objectives of creation of Pakistan and application of Pakistan ideology is also discussed at the end of the unit. Objectives: After reading this chapter you will be able: 1. To develop understanding of the ideology of Pakistan. 2. 3. 4. To learn about the evolution of two-nation theory and background of ideology of Pakistan. To know the contribution of the leaders like Sir Sayad, Alama Iqbal and Quidi Azam. To comprehend the multiple aims and objectives of creation of Pakistan. 3. 1.1 Ideology of Pakistan: The term ideology consists of two Greek words, idio and logos, which means the science or study of ideas. The term ideology is a complex discourse in a realm of social sciences due to controversial approaches among scholars and theorists on its definition and meaning. Historically, the word ideology was first time used by French thinker Antoine de Stut de Tracy during the French Revolution. He defined this word as the science of ideas concerning with social and political life. According to Karl Marx, the ideology is about ideas of ruling class who want to maintain their privileged position and order through the capitalism. Martin Seliger defined the term ideology as set of ideas by which men posit, explain and justify the ends and means of organized social action irrespective of whether such action aims to preserve, amend, uproot or rebuild a given social order. George Brass describes the term ideology any plan or program of common. Life based upon thinking and philosophy is called ideology. Despite the controversial approaches to the concept of ideology, the basic features of concept remain the same. However, the term ideology can be defined as a set of socially shared beliefs, norms, values, ideals, convictions, institutions, goals and a body of knowledge which people believe significant and practicable. All these features bind the nation together and depict a true reflection and product of ideology. These certain common traits in almost every ideology throughout the world are same. It proposes a step forward, for example, a manifesto or line of action to be followed in order to achieve the desired goal in the future. The socially shared ideas, speculation and beliefs are associated with ideologies to justify the existing or desired social or political order. A political ideology is a set of shared beliefs, values, norms and principles that explain and justifies a preferred political order or proposed a new order and program to nation or civilization. As mentioned before, the notion of ideology was originated during the French Revolution which mean "science of ideas". But the concept of political ideology emerged in early 19th century. Importance of Ideology: Ideology is a motivational and very significant force behind the development of a nation. Ideology gives a right direction and a sense of purpose to a nation. It provides a platform to scattered social groups in society and brings them together. It also plays vital role in nation building. Furthermore, ideology gives the direction to its followers toward evolution and revolution. New norms, values and cultures are shaped by ideologies and these traits work like a binding force in a society. The function of ideology is like a backbone in the structure of a nation and without it, there is no concept of a nation. Ideology of Pakistan: The creation of Pakistan is unique in a sense that it is based on the philosophy of Islam and not on the western concept of nation-state. The Concept of Nation: 4. States emerged in Europe in the early 19th century. According to it, the secularism is a central belief of nation-state in which sovereignty belongs to people. Conversely, the foundation of Pakistan is based upon the religion of Islam where all sovereignty of state and people belongs to Almighty Allah. The ideology of Pakistan passed through different phases and evolutionary process. The popular slogan "Pakistan ka matlab kiya, la ilaha illa Allah" was the central theme of freedom movement which provided basis to Pakistan. Historical experiences raised the consciousness in Muslims of subcontinent that they are quite different from the Hindus in every aspect of life. However, 19th century was a period of great trial and crises for Muslims in British India. At that time, few people realized the problems of Muslims. Alama Iqbal provided the philosophical explanation by presenting the idea of separate homeland for Muslims of subcontinent. Subsequently, M. Dada Jinnah translated the abstract ideas of Iqbal into a reality in the form of sovereign Islamic state. Two-Nation Theory: The communal concept of two-nation theory was root cause for the foundation of Pakistan as a sovereign state. The dissimilarities and differentiations between the two major communities, Muslims and Hindus of the subcontinent in the form of cultural, political, linguistic, philosophical, religious. Economic and social means were the basis of two-nation theory. The two-nation theory simply defines that the Hinduism and the Islam are not only two different religions but they are two distinct social orders and entirely different ways of life. The Hindus and the Muslims are two different nations on the basis of two-nation theory. In spite of living together with Hindus for more than 1,000 years, Muslims of subcontinent have their own norms, values, culture, eating habits, music, architecture, literature and religion. So, Muslims cannot be merged in any other nation due to different worldview as their ideology is. Based on principles of Islam, consequently, these dissimilarities pushed the Muslims towards demand of separate homeland wherein they can practice their religion freely. Self-assessment number 1:1 2. 3. 4. 5. 6. The concept of political ideology emerged in early underscore 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 century. These certain common traits in almost every underscore 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 throughout the world are same. The function of ideology is like a underscore 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 in the structure of a nation. Ideology is a motivational and very significant underscore 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 behind the development of a nation. The ideology of Pakistan passed through different phases and underscore 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 process. The Hindus and the Muslims are two different nations on the basis of two-nation underscore 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 underscore. Questions 1, 2, 3: Discuss the origin of ideology and significance of ideology. Explain the ideology of Pakistan with referie to two-nation theory. Give a comprehensive account on importance of ideology and Pakistan ideology. 5. 1.2 The Indus Civilization: In term of the ancient, Indus civilization is as old as Sumerian and the Indus region is similar to Mesopotamia and Nile Valley. It was located is now Pakistan and northwest India today. The archaeological studies show that it covered larger area than modern Pakistan and stretching to Balochistan, Gulf of Cambat to the south and to the Himalayas. The Indus Valley was a land of great fertility irrigated by five rivers. Indus civilization flourished on the banks of the great rivers, possibly the Indus and Saraswati. In the third millennium, the settlements started in Indus basin and other areas of the subcontinent were the home of small farming communities, pastoral tribes and hunter-gatherers. The Indus civilization was expanded over the large area far larger than of its contemporary civilizations. In the same period, other civilizations were flourishing in Mesopotamia and Egypt while the other ancient civilizations of Egypt, Mesopotamia. And China left own expression in the form of architect, monuments and historical records. Egyptian and Near Eastern civilizations were remembered and recorded in histories but the Indus Valley civilization was forgotten. During the 1920, British were ruling over India. They started investigation the historical sites of South Asia. They discovered the two important cities of Indus civilization, Harappa and Mohenjo Daro. The archaeological remains show that the Indus civilization did not develop suddenly but gradually. Before the appearance of mature Indus civilization, the people lived in small villages and rural communities. On the later period, there was a proliferation of small towns and cities. As the time passed, these small towns and cities ultimately became large and transformed into the full-fledged cities like Harappa. It was a metropolitan city and trading center in region. The whole period of Indus Valley civilization can be divided into three phases. First, the early phase of Indus civilization started from 3,500 B.C., 2,600 B.C. This period experienced the initial and small-scale town planning in the form of architect, mud structures, industry, trade and commerce, arts and crafts etc. The second mature period, from 2,600 B.C. to 1,900 B.C. was marked by the well-developed and organized cities and towns with burnt brick structures and marvelous buildings, internal and foreign. Trade, diversity in crafts types etc. The late Indus Valley phase from 1,900 B.C. to 1,400 B.C. was the period of demise. Various towns and cities were started shrinking and disappeared. Trade, commerce and business collapsed leading to the gradual fall of the significant urban features and traits of Indus civilization. The remains show that the Indus culture was not spread over only modern-day Pakistan. Even it spread over vast areas of subcontinent such as Punjab, Haryana, Rajasthan, Maharashtra, Uttar Pradesh, Gujarat and some parts of Afghanistan. The Harappa, Kalabangon, Mohenjo Daro were major cities and the heartland of Indus civilization. Most of the settlements, small towns and villages were located in this region because this area was shared some important features in terms of the topography, plain land, soil type, weather, drainage, climate and subsistence pattern. The flatland of Indus Valley was: 6. Much fertile which received heavy monsoons and supply of water from Himalaya rivers. Thus, agriculture-based economy was developed in this region because of its flatland and distinct geographical features. Agriculture began in civilization around 4,000 B.C. and main crops were wheat, barley, with rice and cotton grew by Indus farmers. Wheat, rice and barley were the staple crops in Indus which cultivated in the rabbi season. Several other crops including lentil, pea and chickpea were cultivated in the rabbi season. Cotton was cultivated as a karif crop and planted in June and harvested from November onward. However, it is thought that this was the method of cultivation in Harappan times as nowadays. Town Painting: Urban settlements and cities developed during the 3,000 B.C. The cities and towns were much larger than Egyptian cities. The Harappa and Mohenjo Daro were two important cities of Indus civilization with almost 50,000 inhabitants. The town planning was the most significant feature of Indus Valley civilization. All the urban settlements marked by great uniformity in the form of design and pattern of towns, streets, structures, size of bricks, drainage system etc. The major cities like Mohenjo Daro, Harappa, Kalabangon and other towns were divided into two major parts. The citadel was built on higher mound on the western side and a lower town developed for residence area and market on the eastern side of the town. The citadel in Indus cities had great importance with large structures. It used for administrative functions and as a ritual centers. The lower town was divided into several residential blocks. The streets were straight and interconnected with each other in criss-cross pattern. The main streets were connected with narrow lanes. The doors of the buildings and houses were opened in these narrow lanes not in the main streets. The sizes of the houses were different and varied in the cities of Indus civilization. Mostly the houses of ordinary people were consisted of a single-room structure. On the other hand, the larger houses had one story with many rooms surrounded by a lawn, all the houses and building built by baked bricks with high-quality material. However, the houses contain a private well, kitchen and bathroom. The variation in the size of the houses shows the class structure of society. Therefore, the richer and elite class resided in them. Bigger houses whereas ordinary people or per section of the society lived in one room. Buildings: The urban settlements had a complex and sophisticated sewer system. Every house had a bathroom and wastewater was collected into small drains in street which flowed into the main drainage system. The drains were covered with stone slabs and constructed at regular distance for cleaning. All the evidence stated that Indus cities and town were well-planned with brick houses, baths, excellent drains and sewers, granaries for storing cereals, workshops and fortified citadels. Industries and Crafts: In Indus civilization, there were many craftsmen who produced much headwork and ornaments made of precious stones and shells. The Indus people were aware about the use of metals except iron. They made different objects of gold and silver including beads, armlets, needles and other ornaments. But the silver was: 7. Commonly used to make objects than gold. The common tools like axe, saws, chisels, knives, spearheads and arrowheads have been discovered which used by Indus people. The weapons produced by the Indus people were small and defensive in nature since they were not aware the usage of sword etc. They obtained the copper mainly from Rajasthan and gold from the Himalayan riverbeds and silver from Mesopotamia. It is important to note that they used the bronze though in limited manner. Several evidences had been found that bead making was common. It was an important craft of that time and many beadmaker shops have been discovered at Harappa and Lato. Some precious and semi-precious stones were used for making bead. Even gold and silver beads have been discovered. Beside of this, a variety of terracotta figurines of males and females, models of birds, monkeys, dogs, sheep and cattle have been found from different sites of Indus civilization. The evidence shows that Indus people were excellent in a variety of arts and crafts. They were brilliant to make different type of pottery and decorated the pottery with attractive colors and animal pictures. Seal manufacturing was also important industry in Indus cities. They manufactured different kind and size of seals usually square in shape and made from steatite. These seals depict a number of animals and some signs of script which has not been interpreted yet. Trade: Many evidence have been found that they have a commercial and trading network within the region and with external civilizations like Sumerian. Overall, business, trade, commerce and industry was an important and attractive attribute of the urban economy of the Harappans. Because the urban areas of Indus were depended on the surrounding rural areas for food supply and other raw material. Likewise countryside population needed a market for other products while urban industry and craftsmen sell their goods to rural people. This contact developed the urban-rural relationship. Moreover, the Indus traders also developed the business relations with foreign lands and other contemporary civilization especially Mesopotamia. Because various kind of metal and raw material was not available locally so they had to be brought from other regions. They imported precious stones from southern India and silver and tin from Afghanistan and Persia. Lahore was one of the busy and popular ports because overall it was a trading. Civilization and through this port they exchanged several goods and products with other regions. Moreover, the inhabitants of Indus civilization had enjoyed a better economic life as compared to the other contemporary Babylonians and Egyptians. Social Stratification: It is argued that the Indus civilization was matriarchal society in nature. This argument on the popularity of the mother goddess which have been found in Punjab and Sind region. The people of Indus were adopted diverse professions as a priest, the warrior, peasant, trader, artisan, masons, weavers, goldsmith and potter etc. Class structure was also existed in Indus society particularly in urban settlements. The remains of different types of buildings and houses that were used by different classes have been discovered at Harappa and Lato. The class of laborers lived barracks like small quarters. The people lived in big houses belonged from richer or upper class. The use of ornaments like necklace, armlet, earring, beads, bangles was common in both gender. 8. Script: The most interesting aspect of this civilization that the people were literate and they could write. But, archaeologists still cannot interpret and understand the writing. Examples of this writing system have been found on pottery, amulets, carved stamp seals and even in weights and copper tablets which have been found in Harappa and Mohenjo Daro. Historians are not sure about their language which they spoke. However, they assume that Indus people spoke Brahwi, a dialect used by Baluchi people in Pakistan today. Decline of the Indus Valley civilization: The collapse or decline of any civilization cannot be measured exactly. But different historians narrate that the period of 1,000 B.C. is considered to be the decline of Indus civilization. The great and large cities had turned into piles of unpopulated mud. Contrary, the civilization was flourishing and cities were doing well during the period of 2,500 and 1750 B.C. In this period, all the key features and traits such as town planning, writing system, standardized weights and measures, homogeneity in art, crafts and pottery designs etc. started to disappear. For instance, Mohenjo Daro was a major city which consisted of large area and large population but it reduced to a small town of 3 hectares at end of this phase. Different scholars propose the different theories on the decline of Indus civilization. Some believes that well-armored Aryan people suddenly invaded the Indus civilization. Aryan basically was a large. Group of nomadic people migrated from Central Asia and crossed the Hindu Kush, mountains and came in contact with the Indus Valley civilization. This migration of Aryan people into region is considered the reason for the decline of the Indus civilization. Some other historians argue that the decay of Indus civilization was gradual not sudden. The cities emptied slowly because of environmental changes, flood, earthquake and other natural disasters. Thus, there is no single reason behind the collapse of the Indus civilization. Self-assessment number 2:1 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. The Indus Valley was a land of great fertility irrigated by underscore 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 rivers. Urban settlements and cities of different dynasties. Most of these dynasties were following the Buddhism as their religion. 9. The extent of Gondhara: Historically, Gondhara civilization has immense importance. Geographically, Gondhara was a triangular piece of land. It was situated 100 kilometers east to west and 70 kilometers north to south and stretching to the west of the Indus River till the north by the Hindu Kush mountains. The hills of Swat, Dir, Bhuunur, Peshawar Valley and Bajoor worthy areas covered by Gondhara civilization which are presently located in the boundaries of Pakistan. In the 20th century, the detail and interesting record of Gondhara civilization have been found in the different sites of Taxila, Swat and some parts of Cape K. Many significant Buddhist establishments were resided in Taxila now modern day in Pakistan. Taxila was the one of the main center of Gondhara and it is over 3,000 years old. In 326 B.C., Alexander the Great conquered the region of Taxila and introduced the Greek culture that became an important part of Gondhara art. On the later stages, the Mauryans dynasty took the control of Taxila. Under the great Ashok, Gondhara civilization reached a remarkable matured level of development. In the year of 2 B.C., the Mauryans dynasty adopted the Buddhism as the religion of state. Then Buddhism was flourished and prevailed for over 1,000 years. Taxila, Swat and Charasada were three important centers for Gondhara arts, learning, culture, spirituality, business and trade during this time. Usually, monastic houses and stupas were center of Buddhist learning, art and culture. Hundreds of monasteries and stupas were built by the Ashok the Great. Swat is very popular as a land of romance and beauty. Swat was also a holy land of Buddhist learning and piety and it is celebrated throughout the world due to Gondhara culture. Swat is well-renewed place because of Buddhist pilgrimage. According to Buddhist historian, the Buddha himself came to Swat and preached to the people here. During this time, the Gondhara civilization became the center of learning, education and spiritual influence but the world-famous Gondhara culture and art also flourished due to: These learning centers, a unique and different art of sculpture emerged which is known as: Gondhara art all over the world. The Gondhara art developed and spread all over the world. The styles developed and matured here were imitated in neighboring countries. For example, the Buddhist art and style was imitated in images made of bronze by Chinese. It is to remember that Gondhara civilization is always been connected with Buddhism. The people who belong to Buddhism had keen interest in making sculptures. After the death of Gotam Buddha, the spiritual guide of the Buddhists, his teachings were spread by Ashok the Great. Ashok spread the teachings of Gotam through three ways. First, he developed the culture of writing his teachings of Gotam on the mountains. Second, he promoted the culture of the pillars of stones on which the teachings of Buddha engraved. Third, Ashok took highly interest in constructing stupas. Moreover, the public took interest in making status of Buddha and his disciples while in this way the culture of Gondhara included various type of art. The monumental and rich legacy of Buddhist art, culture and architecture can be seen in Pakistan. A lot of the Gondhara heritage in craft and art is preserved in the region of Taxila. Gondhara is the civilization spread from: Rabalpindi to Peshawar. However, the Gondhara art and sculptures can be seen in them. 10. Museums of Pakistan: European countries like Germany, England, France and China, Japan, Korea, India and Afghanistan. Gondhara civilization witnessed the rule of multiple dynasties of antiquity as mentioned below. Akemenids from 600 to 400 B.C. Greeks, from 326 to 324 B.C. Mauryans, from 324 to 185 B.C. Indo-Greeks, from 250 to 190 B.C. Scythians, from 2nd century to 1st century B.C. Parthians, from 1st century B.C. to 1st century C. Cushions, from 1st to 5th century C. White Hans, from 5th century C. Hindu Shahi, from 9th to 10th century C. Self-Assessment Number 3-1. Two, Three, Four, Five. Geographically, Gondharra was a underscore 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 piece of land. Hundreds of monasteries and stupas were built by the underscore 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 the Great. The styles developed and matured here were underscore 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 in neighboring countries. Gondharra underscore 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 is always been connected with Buddhism. Underscore 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 took highly interest in constructing stupas. Questions 1, 2, 3, 4. Explain the origin and decline of the Indus civilization. Describe the main features of urban culture in Indus Valley civilization. Discuss the trade and industry of Indus people. Write a note on Gondharra civilization. 1.4 Muslim traders in the subcontinent. The concept of nationhood in Muslims of subcontinent was developed before the making of Pakistan. Pakistan is a result of this concept of nationhood rather than Pakistan is creating a concept of nationhood. A deep study of the history proves that the Muslim nationalism emerged with the advent of Islam. Islam in subcontinent introduced new principles significant to every sphere of life. The Muslim nationalism started in the subcontinent when first Indian embraced Islam. It was the first step towards the two-nation theory. Initially, Islam spread in the Indian coastal areas through the Arab traders because they used to visit southern Indian coastal areas for purpose of trade. They came in close contact with the local population and got an opportunity to preach Islam. Arabs impressed the local people by their simplicity, fair business dealing, equality and honesty. After that, Muhammad bin Qasim was the first ever Muslim general of Arab army. Conquered some parts of India during the reign of a Mayad dynasty. Subsequently the... Eleven. Second phase of Muslim expansion started by Mahmud of Gazna who launched a series of invasions and opened the gate to preach Islam in subcontinent. On the later stages, the spread of Islam in subcontinent was carried on by the Muslim Sufis, saints and mystics like Moinuddin Chishti, Ali Hajjvari, Bayudhizakriya, Miran Hussain Zanjani etc. These dedicated, selfless Sufis and mystics rejected the vices, discouraged the caste system and inequality in the Indian society. Before advent of Islam, people of subcontinent were divided into different social factions through rigid caste system. When these saints and mystics presented and preached the true image of the Islamic principles, these principles attracted many followers and got huge conversions because of its principles and simple way of life. 1.5 Muslims and non-Muslims relations in... Subcontinent. Khatapudin Ibach was the first Muslim ruler in subcontinent who permanently established Muslim dynasty in subcontinent that followed by Sultanate Delhi, slave dynasty and Mughal rulers. These Muslim dynasties paved the way and opened the door for Muslim missionaries. Arab traders and Muslim Sufis introduced Islamic teachings to the people of the subcontinent. Therefore, with the spread of Islam it entirely changed the pattern and character of Indian society. A new understanding of relationship and human interaction between different social groups emerged which shaped the new culture of tolerance and acceptance for each other. However, Islam was a blessing for the lower classes of India. The people of lower occupational groups who were suppressed under the existing social order willingly embraced the Islam. A strong Muslim community came into existence on the soil of India who had its own understanding of life, culture, norms, values, customs and heroes. The Muslims established their national identity through the unmatched popularity of Islam in subcontinent. On the other hand, Hinduism made many efforts to stop the expansion of Islam. Several Hindu movements emerged with the slogan to reforms the Indian society actually to halt expansion of Islam. The magnetic force of Islam and its attractive principles of equality, brotherhood, social justice and respect defeated the all effort of Hinduism. Dini Alahi and Bhakti movements etc. created a strong reaction and anger among the Muslim religious scholars. So, they made efforts to protect and preserve the true image of Islam. Role of Sheikh Ahmad Serhindi and others was significant to oppose such kind of movement as they made great efforts to restore pure teachings of Islam. Sheikh Ahmad opposed un-Islamic trends. Furthermore, he advocated the separate... Identity and image of Muslim nationalism: He was believer of two-nation theory and favor of maintaining the separate identity between Muslims and Hindus. The principles of equality and social justice acted like magnetic forces for the Hindus to be inspired from and lead them to follow Islam. Twelve. The Muslims ruled over subcontinent for centuries. Therefore, Muslim rulers were dethroned by British. In 1857, the War of Independence was a turning point of their fortune. It was major setback to the Muslims of Indian who were blamed by the British for the rebellion and uprisings. The British with the help of Hindus pushed the Muslims into the backwardness in every walk of life. This social conditions and crisis paved the way and forced the Muslims to search their separate identity of nationalism, the Muslim nationalism. On that time of despair and distress, some Muslim scholars sought to reform the teachings of Islamic laws and to promote its application in a Muslim society. One of the influential and prominent people among these figures was Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan who came forward and awakened Muslims of India well in time. His literary contribution and educational services especially the Aligarh movement was one of the best device of. Social mobility for the Indian Muslim under British colonial rule: In 1885, the Indian. National Congress was established by Sir Hume as an Indian nationalist party under the British government. The Congress worked and supported the British government in India and acted like king party. Muslim gentry opposed the creation of Congress. Sir Sayad advised the Muslims not to participate in Congress as he realized that the Muslims should not take part in anti-government activities. Secondly, Congress would safeguard the interests of only Hindus. Sir Sayad used the word "two nation" for the Muslims and Hindus. His fear of Hindu domination sowed the seeds for the two-nations theory. After some years, All India Muslim League was established in All India Muslim Conference in 1906 at Dhaka. Most of the leaders of All India Muslim League were graduated by Aligarh University. They wanted to protect the social and political rights of Indian Muslims on the western political lines. The aims and objectives of All India Muslim League were to remove the misconception between British government and Muslims and to protect and advance the political rights and interests of the Muslims of India. Self-Assessment Number 4-1. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six, Seven. The Muslim nationalism started in the underscore 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 when first Indian embraced Islam. A deep study of the history proves that the Muslim underscore 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 emerged with the advent of Islam. Before advent of Islam, people of subcontinent were underscore 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 into different social factions through rigid caste system. Arab traders and Muslim Sufis underscore 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 Islamic teachings to the people of the subcontinent. Dini Alahi and Bhakti movements etc. created a strong underscore 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 and anger among the Muslim religious scholars. In 1857, the War of Independence was a underscore 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 point of their fortune. Muslim gentry opposed the creation of underscore 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 Questions 1, 2. Explain the evolutionary process of ideology of Pakistan. How Islam spread in subcontinent? Thirteen. 3. Write a note on advent of Islam and relationship between Muslim and non-Muslim in subcontinent. 1.6 Sir Sayad Ahmad, Alama Iqbal, Quidayazam. And ideology of Pakistan. 1.6.1 Sir Sayad Ahmed Khan and two-nation theory when great Mughal empire was collapsing and declining in subcontinent. In this critical time, Muslims of subcontinent produced a courageous and eminent leader Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan. Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan was born in very noble family at Delhi in 1817. He got his early education from his maternal grandfather who was a distinguished scholar and only mathematician of this time. Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan was trained in various subjects like Arabic, Persian literature, history, mathematics and medicine. After completing his education, he joined the government service as head clerk in 1839. Soon, he passed examination and appointed as a sub-judge. After serving in different areas in different capacities, he was promoted to the post of chief judge in 1846. At the eve of War of Independence in 1857, Sir Sayad was performing his duties as a judge however. War changed him entirely. The Battle of 1857 created a huge gulf and mistrust between... British and Muslims: He took responsibility of Indian Muslim and he convinced the Muslim community to acquire the modern education. In the beginning, Sir Sayad Ahmed Khan believed in Indian nationalism. But later on his faith about Indian nationalism was shaken due to Hindi-Urdu controversy. Hindi-Urdu controversy started in the year 1867 when Banasi Hindus started campaign to replace Urdu by Hindi as an official language. This conflict changed the mindset of Sir Sayad so he became extremely disappointed to see the behavior and prejudice of Hindus towards Muslims. Finally, he was convinced that Hindus could never be friends of Muslim. Sir Sayad Ahmed Khan expressed his views to Mr. Shakespeare, the governor of Baneras. "I am convinced now that Hindus and Muslims could never become one nation as their religion and way of life was quite different from each other." In the political sphere, Sir Sayad attained several successes. He removed the misunderstandings between British government and Indian Muslim. At that time Indian National Congress was grew to be... Very powerful political party in India. Sir Sayad observed that Congress projected the... Hindus demands: He advised the Muslims not to join the political activities of Congress but to concentrate on modern education. He realized that practical politics would divert the concentration from education. The word "nation" for Indian Muslim was first used by Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan. He supported the separate electorate for Muslims in British India. Sir Sayad Ahmed Khan was a pioneer and architect of two-nation theory in subcontinent. Literary and educational contributions of Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan: The first effort made by Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan was the writing of a booklet with title as Rasali. Fourteen. Asba by Bagawatay Hind in 1858. This writing was a factual analysis of the reasons of the mutiny of 1857. The pamphlet was translated into English with the main objective that British could read it. In this booklet Sir Sayad discussed the miseries and problems of the Muslims of India as well as he analyzed the policies of British for the India in detail. In addition to this, Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan also wrote a number of other books to remove misconception and distrust between the Muslims and the British government. Loyal Mohamadans of India was one of the popular book written by Sir Sayad. At that juncture, British used the term "Mohamadans" for the Muslims of subcontinent and Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan had used the same term "the Mohamadans" to communicate with them. Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan produced many books, articles and pamphlets to remove misperceptions between Islam and Christianity. A commentary on Bible written by Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan. He tried to indicate and explore the commonalities and the shared points, ideas, beliefs between Islam and the Christianity in this commentary. Take a Kyaf Sinisara was another popular writing by Sir Sayad. Nazera is a term which use for Christians. He argued in his writing that the usage of the word "nazera" does not show something derogatory and prejudicial toward Christians. But the Muslims use this word to express their positive sentiment and respect for Christians. Sir Sayad established a scientific society to promote modern knowledge and English. This society used to hold meetings from time to time. It translated the excellent English articles into Urdu. Another key venture undertaken by Sir Sayad Ahmed Khan was the writing of Aligarh Institute Gazette. This Gazette was published in two languages i.e. English and Urdu. The Gazette played a vital role in spreading and promoting the modern knowledge, scientific ideas, and modern education among the Muslims of India. Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan published a magazine with title Tesa Balaklak in Urdu. The main focus of the magazine was on social and cultural issues of the Muslim of the subcontinent. In eighteen seventy-two, he established Muslim school system to promote the modern education along with Islamic education in the Muslims community of India. In June eighteen seventy-five, Sir Sayad Ahmad Khan led the foundation of a college at Aligarh. The British government was a supporter of this effort because they thought that in this way Muslims would access to modern education. 1.6.2 Allama Iqbal and vision of a separate Muslim state legends like Allama Iqbal are born once in centuries. He was great poet, philosopher, and politician who gained the countrywide fame. He received his education from Government College Lahore and then went to Europe for the higher studies. He obtained his PhD in philosophy from Germany. However, he entered in Indian politics to protect the interests of Muslims. His entry in politics was warmly welcomed by all India Muslim League and he proved himself to be a good leader. Fifteen. Iqbal's ideas were transformed and renewed about politics, nationalism, and Western culture during the stay in Europe. He was completely changed man with new perception and ideology after returning from Europe. He admits that certainly Europe changed my old beliefs and ideas regarding state and Indian nationalism. He said, "I was enthusiastic Indian nationalist during my college days. The change happened due to exposure to the Western world. It gives me a new thought, so I am not a nationalist now." Allama Iqbal studied Islam deeply and believed that it is a complete code of life. After returning from Europe, Dr. Iqbal compared Islam with the Western culture ideology. He reached at the conclusion that Islam is the only way of life which can solve all the problems of mankind. He comprehended the philosophy of Islam and so became the proponent of principles of Quran. Iqbal rejected the prevalent concept of territorial nationalism in his poem. He refuted the concept on the basis of its contradiction with Islam and it is modern form idolatry. Dr. Iqbal explains that the concept of territorial nationalism divide the nations of world. The concept of territorial nationalism has changed the course of politics and economy. The objective and aims of politics and economy to take over the other nations land and resources and destruction of houses of poor. Iqbal's main argument was against the Western concept of linguistic and racial nationalism. Therefore, he supported the Muslim nationalism which is based on spiritual homogeneity. He wrote on territorial nationalism in the year nineteen ten. Islam as complete code of life appeared in a world as antithesis of idolatry. In a modern world, what is patriotism? Nothing else than a new form of idolatry. The purpose of Islam is to protest against idolatry in any form. This is our duty and mission to protest against all form of new idolatry. While exploring the solidarity of Muslims, he asserted his views in same notebook. The solidarity of Muslims as a community in subcontinent stands on Islamic principle. Nevertheless, our educationists and intellectuals are searching in the dark. They are perhaps much confused and unable to realize the difference between Islamism and Westernism. The Western culture and norms constructs nationality on the basis of racial and linguistics difference. But the Islamic laws do not recognize the racial, linguistics, and historical differences of human. Because the concept of territorial nationality in Islam is not ultimate goal and highest limit but the spiritual homogeneity. Dr. Iqbal openly negated the idea of Western type of nation-state in India and stressed on the separate image of Muslims. In the eighteenth century, new concept of nation-state introduced in Europe. This concept further provided the strong foundation to secularism, a philosophy which declared the separation of religion and state system. Allama Iqbal did not believe the concept of separation of religion and state system, rather he emphasized that religion and politics are not separated in Islam. Further, he comes up with the idea of separate state which rests on principles of Islam. Sixteen. Iqbal created the awareness amongst Muslims and showed them of their lost glory through his poetry. He used the poetry as a tool for revitalization of Muslims. His message does not contradict the Islamic ideology. Iqbal's approach was so pragmatic. He motivated the Muslims to have courage like their ancestors that the institution of caliphate could again be restored in Muslim Ummah. In his Persian poetry with the title of Secrets of the Self and Mysteries of Selflessness published in nineteen fifteen. Iqbal asserted, "Our Prophet P B H migrated from his birthland and settled in Medina permanently. Our Prophet P B H founded Muslim nationhood in Medina. The Indian Muslims must follow the precedence of life of Prophet P B H." On these grounds, separate identity of the Muslims as a nation was supported by Allama Iqbal. He said that there would be no possibility of peace in the country until and unless the Muslims are recognized as a separate nation because of their distinctive cultural values, religion, and history. Iqbal advocate the idea of Muslim nationalism and refuted the concept of territorial nationalism. Allama Iqbal delivered his famous presidential address in the annual meeting of All India Muslim League at Allahabad in nineteen thirty. The Allahabad address of Iqbal was hallmark and had a great significance in freedom struggle of Indian Muslims. This presidential address defined the fate and destination of Muslims of British India and put their struggle in right direction. Allama Iqbal gave philosophical explanation of two nation theory and proposed the separate homeland for the Muslims. He declared in his address. "India is a continent of a vast population and different human groups belonging to different races, speaking different languages and professing different religions. To base a constitution on conception of united India is to prepare for civil war. I therefore would like to see the Punjab, Northwest Frontier Province, Sindh, and Balachistan amalgamated into a single state. Self-government within the British Empire or without the British Empire. The formation of a single consolidated Northwest Indian Muslim state appears to me to be the final destiny of the Muslims at least of Northwest India." He wrote a letter to Jinnah and convinced him to organize the Muslim League and to leads the Muslim of subcontinent. Iqbal knew that darkness and desperation is prevailing in the Muslim of India, but he was much optimistic. When Muhammad Ali Jinnah came back to India from London, he started the reorganization of the All India Muslim League. Iqbal extended his complete support to Jinnah and worked hard to organize the party in Punjab as a loyal soldier. This was the political cooperation between these two greatest leaders of Muslim India which turned the Muslim League into mass political party of India. All India Muslim League invoked the Iqbal's concept of Muslim homeland for mass mobilization. The Muslims of India effectively and forcefully started their struggle around the flag of Muslim League with an aim to establish an independent state. Eventually, both the Hindus and British realized that the partition of India into two independent states is inevitable. Seventeen. 1.6.3 Muhammad Ali Jinnah and two nation theory Ahmad Jinnah is known as the Quidayazam in Pakistan. He was a charismatic leader in the real sense. He was a history-making leader who changed the course of history. Jinnah entered in politics in nineteen oh six when he joined Indian National Congress. During this time, Indian Muslims became conscious about their separate identity and rights. All India Muslim League was established to protect the interests of Muslims, but Jinnah kept away from League's politics and agenda. Later on, Quidayazam joined All India Muslim League in nineteen thirteen and played significant role to promote Hindu-Muslim unity. In nineteen twenty, he resigned from the Congress due to disagreement with Gandhi on the issue of self-rule, Swaraj. After resigning from Congress, he actively participated in Muslim League affairs to articulate the Muslims' demands with zeal and zest. Quidayazam played a decisive role to peruse the Muslims' interests by facing strong opposition from Hindus and British. It was the charismatic personality of Quidayazam who influenced Muslim leaders and masses and convinced them to show disassociation with Indian nationalism. Quidayazam rejected the narrow report on the basis of Hindu bigotry and prejudice. On this occasion, Quid sharply responded to Congress and British government. No, there is another party Muslims and the Muslim League has the right to represent the interests of Muslim in British India. In nineteen thirty-five, Mr. Jinnah used the word nation for the Muslims of India. He explained the separate identity of Muslims with reference to Islamic principles and way of life and established that Muslims are quite different from the Hindus in every aspect of life. On March nineteen thirty-six, Quidayazam said that the Muslims could arrive at a settlement with Hindus as two nations. Quidayazam stated in his speech at Lucknow in the year nineteen thirty-seven. "The Hindus constitute the majority community and majority community" shows his version that Hindustan is only for the Hindus. The Congress established its government through the Nineteen Thirty-Five Act. Congress rule was a great eye-opener and shock for the Muslims. The Congress rule proved that they only want to establish Hindu Raj in India. Due to the Congress government, Muslim of all over India experienced countless pains and miseries. Eventually, the Muslims started to mobilize themselves under the dynamic leadership of Quidayazam around Muslim League flag. Dr. Iqbal wrote a letter to Muhammad Ali Jinnah and put some suggestions in the letter. "We should consider the Muslims of Northwest India and Bengal, Muslim-majority provinces as a nation and start struggle for self-determination within India or outside India." Muhammad Ali Jinnah was convinced that the future of Muslim of India is not secure as Congress rule had already confirmed this. Sir Jinnah wrote an article published in Time and tied in nineteen forty. He expressed his views. Eighteen. Now the Western world considers the religion as private matter between man and God which separate it from state. The British people perhaps forget the religious wars of their own history. In the case of Hinduism and Islam, both religions have distinctive norms, values, and definite social codes. In an interview to London News Chronicle, Quidayazam said, "The division of India into two sovereign states is only pragmatic solution of the Hindu-Muslim conflict. But the fact is this, Hindus will not accept our complete independence as a majority community in India." However, it is important to mention here that the speeches and statements of Quidayazam from nineteen forty to nineteen forty-seven clearly emphasized that the new state would be an Islamic state. In nineteen thirty-nine, he stated that the Muslims and Hindus are two nations. "We are a nation with our own distinctive culture and civilization, language and literature, names and nomenclature, sense of values and proportion, legal laws and moral code, custom and calendar, history and tradition, aptitudes and ambitions. In short, we have our own distinctive outlook on life and of life. By all canons of international law, we are a nation." On March twenty-third, nineteen forty at Lahore, Quidayazam delivered the historic speech which highlighted the idea of separate homeland for Muslims. He said, "Islam and Hinduism are not religions in the strict sense of the word, but are, in fact, different and distinct social orders. The Hindus and Muslims belong to two different religious philosophies, social customs, and literatures. They neither intermarry nor interdine together and indeed, they belong to two different civilizations which are based mainly on conflicting ideas and conceptions." We can easily find out through the speeches of Quidayazam Muhammad Ali Jinnah that which type of state he wanted, as he said, "In British India, under the parliamentary democratic system a paramount and perennial Hindus majority defiantly would dominate over a minority. The British type of parliamentary government would only establish rule of complete Hindu domination over the society in India. Certainly, the Muslim community and other minorities in India would be absolutely powerless." In his July nineteen forty-two interview to the American press representatives, Jinnah said, "Many efforts were made by the Hindu Congress during last twenty-seven months to undermine and suppress culture identity, language, and customs of the Muslims. Even the Muslim students were pushed in educational institutions to read the books prescribed by the Hindu Congress. We have seen that Congress government had emphasized on the Hindu culture and traditions." Nineteen. Quidayazam in his address to the Students Union of Muslim University in nineteen forty-two stated that, "History of subcontinent reveals that it is a fact that Hindus have not ruled over any part of India from last one thousand years. But our proposal to grant to them the Hindu majority zone, where they can control the government as it is three-fourth of India territory. Further, I would suggest to Hindu leaders not to be greedy because Hindus assumed that they would grab the remaining one-fourth and would establish the Hindu Raj over the whole India. I recommend to them don't be greedy for my one-fourth and let me live my life according to my culture, tradition, language, history, and according to the principles of Islam." Jinnah acknowledged Islam and its significant role in nation-building while delivering speech to All India Muslim League. "What is the most important thing that keeps the Muslims united? It is the only Islam." Which unites the Muslim. Holy Quran is a great book which is the source of guidance and covers all aspect of life. I am hopeful and confident that we will go on and on. There will be more unity and more oneness because of one God, one book, one prophet, and one nation. October nineteen forty-seven, he had underscored the state's Islamic character in the following words. "By the grace of God Pakistan is an est- "By the grace of God Pakistan is an established fact today. It is country for which we have been struggling for the last ten years. It was just idea that we should have an independent state. An independent state where we can spend our lives according to our religion. Where we can practice our culture and Islamic principles of social justice could practice freely." Almost all the speeches and statement made by Quidi Azm refer to the establishment of an Islamic welfare state. All the speeches are clear and without ambiguity which kind of state Quid had envisioned be. Three. Write a note on Sir Sayed Ahmad Four, five, six. Give a detail account of Allama 1.7 aims and objectives of creation of Pakistan. Two-Nation Theory and Pakistan Ideology. The two-nation theory provided logic to demand for Pakistan. Entire freedom struggle revolve around the two-nation theory. Pakistan ideology is erected on the two-nation theory. The emergence of Pakistan as a sovereign state was unique in the sense that it was based on ideology of Islam. The ideology of Pakistan basically means that Pakistan should be a state where the Muslims can have an opportunity to spend their lives according to Islamic principles. Establishment of the sovereignty of Almighty Allah. The main objective of the demand of separate homeland for Muslims was to institutionalize the Islamic principles and state would ensure the supremacy of Almighty Allah. The Quidi Azm stated that, "We are not demanding only piece of land, however, we want a country where we can practice and introduce Islamic principles." Establishment of Islamic democracy. Islam proposes the unique concept of democracy which is different from Western concept of democracy. According to Islamic governance system, all sovereignty belongs to Almighty Allah rather than people. All people would be treated equally in Islamic system despite of their caste, race, and social status in society. The government of Islamic country is accountable in front of Allah conversely answerable to people on earth. The principles of Islamic democracy ensure the rights of minorities in Pakistan. Justice and equality. It is main directive of Islam that all human beings are to be given equal status without any discrimination of caste, color, creed, language, and culture. The establishment of rule of law and honest judiciary system for all living in the state is intended. Independent judiciary and the supremacy of law are the basic conditions for the establishment of equality and justice. Rights and duties. The significance of the rights of the citizens was acknowledged in the objectives resolution passed in March 1949. At the time much emphasis was laid on the rights and duties of the citizens. In an Islamic state, rights and duties are closely connected and both go hand in hand. Essence to provide security to the minorities was also included in the demand for Pakistan. Preservation of Islamic culture. One of the prime objectives to demand Pakistan was the protection and preservation of Islamic cultural traits from Hindu domination. Muslims were living in subcontinent with their distinctive identity. They were not willing to accept Hindu cultural hegemony over them. Several efforts were made by Hindus too. Twenty-one. Eliminate the Muslim cultural traits. Hindi-Ardu controversy, Shadi and Satan movements are the precedence of Hindu prejudice. Protection of Muslim image and identity. The protection of Muslims rights and national image from Hindu subjugation was one of the reasons to establish Pakistan. In British India, Hindu were dominant in every walk of life especially in politics, jobs, and business dot by acquired the modern education. The backwardness of the Muslims in every field created huge identity crises. On the contrary, the Hindus were the right hand of British so they adopted the derogatory behavior toward Muslim. They blocked all the doors to progress and prosperity for Muslims. Establishment of the balanced economic system. The aim of creation of Pakistan was to establish the balanced economic system based on Islamic economic principles of equality, equity, and welfare. Pakistan government provides economic opportunities and social equality to all people. It was acknowledged Pakistan would be a welfare state and government would be responsible to provide education, health, employment, and good quality of life to citizens of Pakistan. Zakat, usher, and taxes would be collected by the government and be distribute to the poorest, needy, and marginalized sections of society. The economic system of Islam opposes the concentration of wealth and resources in few hands. Conclusion. Pakistan is an ideological state. The ideology of Pakistan was based on two-nation theory which stems from the consciousness of the Muslims of subcontinent. This consciousness was grown in the Muslims of subcontinent that they were a separate nation on the basis of Islamic ideology. Islamic ideology contains its own principle and philosophy of life. These Islamic principles cover social, political, economic, cultural, and all other aspects of human life. These Islamic principles have been in practice for centuries in Muslims of subcontinent. Ultimately, Islamic ideology provided the foundation to the two-nation theory. In the perspective of subcontinent, the two-nation theory means that two major nations, the Muslims and Hindus were living in subcontinent. But the two nations were entirely different from each other in their ideas, collective thinking, and way of life. This separate identity formed the basis of two-nation theory. So, the Indian Muslims fought the War of Freedom on the basis of two-nation theory.